Well, it's seven o'clock. I want to welcome everyone to the May 20, 2014 meeting of Whitehall City Council for the purpose of considering such matters that may come before it. I'm going to ask everyone to move their eyes and remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you. Vice President, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We begin our meeting with our role call. First one.
Greg.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Lecourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
And President Graham.
Present. We have our approval minutes for the May 6, 2014 agenda and regular meetings.
Oh, I thought you were supposed to approve the minutes. Sorry.
I have a motion by Wisconsin and a second by Ms. Lecourt for the approval of the May 6, 2014 minutes. Mr. President, please call the roll.
Greg.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Lecourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
I have the minutes standing approved as voted on in red. It's permitted. Next, we're going to deviate from our printed agenda and we're going to have a special presentation on Coda from our police chief.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. To preserve your time, I'm going to talk while I move this over.
All right. Sounds good. I can't hear you.
Sometimes that's not all bad. As you may recall, about a little over a year ago, you confirmed my mayor's appointment for me on the Coda Board of Trustees. Really didn't know what I was getting myself into, but...
We did.
Yeah, you did. Okay. It's been a significant time commitment, more than I thought, but it's been extremely enjoyable for me and it's been a real good learning experience. If I don't learn anything else, then I learn how to turn this stuff on. Mr. President, I'm sorry. I'm going to put you right in the spotlight here.
I'll duck when you get started.
Okay. At any rate, I felt that after a year has passed, it's probably a good idea to come back before council and let you know exactly what's been going on at Coda and some of the high points. This was just launched, if you can launch a bus, I guess you can launch a bus, May 5th, and that's the new buses for downtown called the C-Bus. And it's a circulator that goes up basically up High Street from the downtown to the short north, back down Front Street to German Village in the brewery district, and back up High Street again. It's a really cool looking bus. And it's, we really think, we're excited about the opportunities for the people downtown to be able to just jump on this bus, take it to the other end of town and back. The people who work downtown can go to different restaurants and do some shopping. And the amount of, if you haven't been downtown lately, the amount of condos that are being built down there is amazing. So, we think this is going to be a tremendous asset to the downtown area, and it will bring a lot of tourism to central Ohio, we think. All the hotels really like that concept and you need that access to Nationwide Arena and Huntington Park and CoSi and the convention center in particular. So, that's something that we just launched, May 5th, so we're doing that as a trial to see how it goes. Now, as far as the update for Coda goes, let's see if I can make this. I'll just give you some facts and figures and some statistics. This is basically a little slideshow that I did for, at the Whitehall Senior Health and Safety Expo last Saturday. So, that's why it says that on there. At any rate, Coda's had a number of new initiatives that I feel almost guilty because I came in after they'd already been started by somebody else and I get to enjoy them. But I'll show you some of those in here. This is basically the Coda Triangle, taxpayers. Coda's service area population is 1.2 million. That's the population that we serve. We do about 60,000, a little over 60,000 weekday trips, and Coda has 900 employees. Coda is funded through, primarily through a sales and use tax. There's a quarter percent permanent tax, and then there's a quarter percent 10-year renewable, which was approved in 2006, so it'll be coming up again in 2016. Sales tax revenue accounts for about 80% of Coda's operating revenue. The Fairbox revenue accounts for about 20%. Service areas that Coda serves right now is 562 square miles, which is all of Franklin County, portions of Delaware, Union, Licking, and Fairfield Counties. Because of a change in the Federal Transit Administration's urban area, Delaware now shares part of Coda's funding stream because they're part of the metropolitan Columbus area now. There's 3,800 bus stops that we maintain, 390 passenger shelters, and 29 parking rides. This little picture down here is one of the coolest things ever. That's our compressed natural gas facility fueling station that's over on McKinley. If anybody ever wants to take a tour of that or see that, I would highly recommend it. I'd be happy to arrange that for you. That's the largest compressed natural gas fueling station in the state of Ohio. Right now, our fixed route service is 69 lines. We have 325 coaches in the fleet. 60 of them are powered by CNG, compressed natural gas. That'll be about 90 by the end of this year because the fleet, we're replacing about 30 coaches a year, and we're replacing them with compressed natural gas. That facility costs about $5 million to build, but it saves about $6 million in fuel costs annually. So, pretty clearly, that's something that was a good benefit. If you stand behind one of the compressed natural gas buses, I think you've seen them going down Broad Street, that looks like it has the big tanks, that's what they are, is the big tanks on top. You stand behind one of those buses and it's really quiet. It's not like the diesel buses that are noisy. You don't see the big plumes of black smoke coming out of the back of them. So, not only is it much more economical to run one of these buses, diesel fuel equivalent's about $1.22 a gallon, so it's much more economical to run these coaches. It's a lot quieter. There's not the noise pollution that there is from a diesel bus, and the air pollution is much less on a, so the carbon footprint on that bus is a lot smaller than on a traditional diesel coach. We run about, just shy of a million annualized service hours in 2014. That will go up in 2015. One of the things that I talked about a little bit at the senior expo at the high school last week was our mobility services, and you've seen those smaller gray buses. Those are on-demand transportation for qualified individuals with disabilities. We have 70 specially equipped vehicles. We run about 20,000 trips per month. Will call services for customers with long-term conditions. They can also ride mainstream, or they can also ride regular service for, fixed route service for a dollar, which is half off the regular fare, if they have somebody there that can help them get on the regular bus. In 2013, we provided about 18.7 million passenger trips. And what's interesting for Whitehall is there's three lines, number one, number two, and number 10. Number 10 is the Broad Street line. Those three lines account for 50% of Coda's ridership. So, that number 10 line that comes through Whitehall is probably, I think it's the second largest, but those three lines combined, and I think one is High Street, one's Cleveland Avenue, and the other one's the East Broad Street. That's our vehicle service hours. You can see in 2006, when our revenue was only half of what it is now, service hours were way low. But since that revenue and the sales tax has picked up, our revenue hours, our vehicle hours are actually climbing considerably. Coda changes their service three times annually, January, May, and September. We do public meetings for public input on those service changes. Sometimes we add frequency and capacity to existing service. If the buses are full to capacity and people are half in the way, we put extra coaches, or we increase the frequency. Or we introduce new service altogether in some of the service changes. We do adjust service to improve on-time performance. We change bus stops around if that's necessary, and our access to mainstream expands as our fixed route service expands. This is really primarily what I wanted to talk to you about, major initiatives for this year. We've installed new High Street passenger shelters. It says June of 2014, but if you drive down High Street, you can see them. They're really cool looking because they were designed by the students at Columbus College of Art and Design. So, that's kind of an interesting thing for their, the downtown circulator bus, you saw that, a picture of that. Cleveland Avenue Bus Rapid Transit Project is in preliminary engineering stages, and we'll be waiting for further approval from the FTA, which the Federal Transit Administration will fund that. Bus Rapid Transit, if you don't know what that is, people say, "Well, why don't we do rail service, light rail in Columbus?" Columbus is the largest city in the United States without a light rail service. So, why don't we do light rail? Because it's really, really expensive. It costs an incredible amount of money to build. Bus Rapid Transit's been a good alternative in several places throughout the country. Cleveland, for example, has a bus, I don't want to, oh, that's Cleveland Avenue. Cleveland, Ohio, has a Bus Rapid Transit program as well. Basically, that's the same thing, very similar to light rail. The buses have flat floors, so you don't have to step onto them. You have loading platforms. You don't have as many bus stops. And the buses have technology in them that gives them signal priority. So, if they come up to a traffic signal, it turns green for the bus. Boom, on you go. So, the bus doesn't slow down. The preliminary, where we'll launch that, if it works through the Federal Transit Administration, is up Cleveland Avenue. That'll go from downtown up Cleveland Avenue to 161, then it'll be regular service up the players from there. But it's marked differently. There's not as many stops. Signal priority in some cities, they have lane priority. So, it moves along just like light rail. The difference is, it doesn't cost as much, not even close, because they're coaches that are on wheels. So, that's kind of an exciting project. We're waiting to see what comes up with that. Downtown North and South terminal renovations are occurring, and we've entered in some partnerships with Children's Hospital and some other private entities that want to be able to use those terminals for their shuttle service. And so, that's become a nice partnership. Transit system review is ongoing right now. That's kind of important for Whitehall in that we noticed when we took the transportation map from, this is the 40th anniversary for Coda this year. So, when we took the original transportation map from the 1970s and overlaid it on top of our transportation map, now the route map looks the same. It goes out a little further into the counties, but the map is essentially the same. So, we said, "Are we doing what we need to do for the residents of Franklin County for transit? I mean, is it the same place as it was 40 years ago?" The answer's probably no. So, we hired a consultant to go through that system review for us. We're working through that as supportive trustees and the leadership team right now. What will likely come out of that for Whitehall is probably additional service in Whitehall, particularly along Hamilton Road, and we're going to see more crosstown service. It's obviously premature to speculate what'll ultimately come out of it, but I feel pretty confident that a lot more crosstown service will happen. So, right now, if you want to go, if you wanted to go to Gehanna on a bus, you'd have to go downtown, you know, and pick up a bus downtown and come all the way back out. So, we're looking at doing some crosstown service, so you'll be able to get from here to there to there without going all the way downtown and back out again. So, that's kind of what we're looking at. New Albany Park and Ride is kind of a big deal for New Albany. We've partnered with New Albany. They're going to run a shuttle service in their new business park, and we'll provide express service from east and in from downtown to that New Albany Park and Ride, which is really just a demonstration of working collaboratively with cities in central Ohio. That's it.
Right.
Anybody have any questions for me with Coda that I probably can't answer, but I'd entertain?
Great. Do they advertise on C-Bus downtown?
Oh, no. There's...
I'm hearing you advertise a lot.
I think there's about 15 of them.
Are they running very quick intervals?
Because, you know, there's going to be a lot of people that figure this out. "Hey, I'm paying 80 bucks a month to park right here because it's close to my work, but down there, I can get it for $40 a month, and I'll just jump on the C-Bus and run down here." Or I can jump on that and, you know, go to lunch up in the short north or downtown. So, the folks that are downtown, the hotels are loving it because if you've got to go to the convention center, you can jump on the C-Bus if you're along that route and run up to the convention center and back. So, I think it will. That's one of the big things that Morpsy indicates is a huge factor in bringing conventions and bringing tourists to central Ohio is having that public transportation available downtown. So, I think that'll make a big difference. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
We appreciate the answer to the update. Looking forward to one next year.
Yes, we do one next year.
All right. That runs us through our next item on the agenda, our normal agenda with this poll public. It's our first opportunity for participants, or for people on the court, to address council amendments. If you'd like to take advantage of that, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
I'm Paul Sparks. I live at 4019 Euro Avenue, and ironically, the first thing I campaigned on politically was a Coda levy in the 70s. But that aside, I really appreciate the talk and the efforts being made to try to reinvest in Whitehall and the rebranding of Whitehall. But I noticed something that might be being left blank, and that is an annual inspection of rental properties, of single-family rental properties that are in the middle of our neighborhoods. They're not in the middle of a rental community. And these houses, I think, should be inspected annually, and this not be a unfunded mandate. This is something that would cost the landlords, and what it would involve is, well, just for example, for energy efficiency sake, storm doors and storm windows, screens and windows for houses, especially houses that don't have AC. But it should be all houses because, you know, there are times when AC's not needed. And that's also if they have functioning air conditioning. But this could be done at a fee to make sure that it's at least 100% covered, and you know there'll be some difficulties, so that these inspections should be tied in to make sure that there's enough fee being charged that it's not a losing proposition for us, and we have landlords cooperating with us in a timely manner. We don't want someone to have to go out to a house three times in order to get this done. And if we're having trouble with a house that's being hidden in an LLC, or, you know, we've got some out-of-state owner, and it's just a manager locally, you know, we make clear that we're going to charge for this, and we would like them to meet these standards because why would we want substandard houses in the middle of our neighborhoods? And I think it could be done, again, without a loss, and heck, maybe we might even create a job.
You have about 20 seconds.
Well, and thank you, is she still here? Oh, well. I was going to say, thank you, police and fire services, for all the good things you do, and thank you, Ray. Somebody came by and picked up some branches in front of my house last Thursday, so I appreciate city services a great deal. And thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the poll public? Please come forward while you are forward. State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Yes. Okay. My name is Russell Welch. I live at 655 Ross Road. I've lived in the city over 50 years. In this court right here, I was convicted sitting right there innocently of hitting a lady in the crosswalk at Country Club and Main Street. I went over and got a copy of the police report, and to these two police officers, that made up this report, definitely need some training in what a jaywalker is, because the one officer issued me a citation for hitting that lady in or close to the crosswalk. A crosswalk is exactly six feet wide. This lady was way out in Main Street, running out of the gas station over there with her coffee cup, and when that sun hit me from the east, I slowed down and went towards the curb and hit the brake or had my foot on the brake, and she slammed into my passenger door on the right side and spilled her coffee. The policeman did not issue me a citation right then, hence he should have. He brought it back here, and another policeman, when I came home that day, came over and issued me the citation. A Columbus police officer pulled in behind my van that morning and parked, and he parked over top of the crosswalk, and she's out in the street waiting for the medic to pick her up to take her to the grand hospital. There is a captain from Farquhar Division over there that saw that. I just talked to him a few minutes ago. And by the way, I am a retired captain from the Whitehall Fire Department with over 25 years of service. I had five years probably after that working on the fire equipment at Whitehall Fire Department. But anyway, I show it to the captain the next day, which was on a Saturday, the report, and he looks at it and he says, "She was jaywalking." I said, "I knew that. The Columbus police officer said that." And he said, "I would go see Chief Siski on that." I called the chief. He looked at it, turned around, and he said, "Russ, usually I back my men up." He says, "They're usually right. This man was way out in left field. You should not have received this citation. She was jaywalking." And he's looking at these six pictures at the back of that report, and it clearly shows the coffee stain out in the street, and it shows the coffee cup that I picked up in the middle of the street and set up on the curb, but I had to walk back towards Country Club Road to place it on the curb. So, I came down here and got a court date.
You have about 31 seconds.
Pardon?
You have about 31 seconds.
31 seconds. Okay. I have talked to the, tried to talk to the, to the city attorney. He wouldn't answer my call. I tried to talk to the mayor two days. She wouldn't talk to me. I finally talked to the safety director, and I talked to the police chief. They said, "Peele it, both of them. She was jaywalking." Anyway, they took my money. And somewhere along the line there, there's something going on, and I'd like you people to know that something is going on here in Whitehall with this court. Thank you.
I wonder if we have one more person?
I'll stand. Gerald Dixon, 3877 Doning Street. I wanted to take a moment to give praise to Councilpersons Bailey and Coniston, based on last week's committee meeting in which they showed concern regarding the upward level of income criteria for the Whitehall Home Reinvestment Program. Their legitimate and sincere concerns with this figure and how it relates to lower-income residents with house repair worries was appreciated by this citizen. And I thought this part important. For years now, I've been critical of the code enforcement division, in part due to an inherent result its implementation causes in a socio-economic fashion, creating a class warfare in our shared community. After all, our wealthier and even middle-class citizens have greater access to financial resources to address physical issues with their houses and properties than those with little incomes. If the city is addressing issues of aesthetics and tells them they must paint their house to their liking, or address vegetation in gutters, et cetera, what are they to do to obtain the paint or buy a ladder to reach the gutters? If the city or volunteer groups offer means to address situations, fine. But without those, these, it is merely punishment for not making as much money as others, and that is the essence of class warfare. Those with means, in a punitive way, threaten those without means to do as they wish. Given this then, there is greater need to help those with lower incomes than those with higher. When Councilman Bailey said that Lowe's will only donate so much paint for the pride of Whitehall to help people, and the reaction to that reality I saw and heard in his voice and body language as the mayor's justification for such a high-income qualification sunk in, it engendered a profound question. What are we to do with citizens who, in this capitalistic society that make varying amounts of income and of which we all play our parts, cannot provide for the aesthetic wishes and desires of the city leaders in the same fashion as those who can? Do we punish them until they leave to lesser environs, living in an aesthetically pleasing exclusivity now enjoyed without them to remind us of the ugly reality of their poverty? Or do we take a sane and humane approach, accepting the reality of what exists in our community, do what we can to help in any way we can, and relax with what can't be done, respecting them and their right to their life that is not ours or our right to control? Those who control this city's direction have a right to their life. Why isn't that right afforded and respected for poorer citizens in the same level of requirement that they require it for themselves, even if their financial abilities do not align? Ultimately, it is a higher level of respect and honor for citizens' human rights and dignity that we must work to restore and upgrade in this community that is important. In their admirable concern and any efforts made toward that spirit, I applaud Councilperson's Bailey and Coniston for that effort. Thank you.
I wonder if we have one more person? I'd love to hear everyone else. State your name and address for the record. Jan Green.
My name is Barbara Blake. My home is at 698 Maplewood Avenue. Thank you, councilmembers, President Graham. I just want to speak to ordinance number 3214. It's about amending section 505-18 about prohibited animals. I have concern about these amendments. I haven't done my due diligence on bees. I do know that several communities do allow beekeeping, as long as you have 7,000 square feet of property. Some of those communities require a six-foot fence around those here, around those properties, and that's to help keep the bees flying above people's heads instead of through their yards or through their airspace. There are requirements for certain types of polymeric plants. There's requirements for clean water... There's requirements for clean water sources. These do need water. As far as farm animals go, I really believe that this is probably meant to target chickens, is my understanding. I do know several people who grow chickens, not just in Whitehall, but I put in other areas of Columbus, Clintonville, Worthington. Those communities do have standards that must be met. Columbus does require that you have a permit if you're going to have chickens. As an example, ordinary-sized chicken, medium to large-sized chicken would require a six-by-eight-foot coop. That would contain 12 birds. Those same birds would also require an eight-to-10-foot, eight-to-10-square-foot run, which is where they get out, get their exercise, not just where they're being kept. If they are kept simply in the coop itself, the coop size would need to be larger. As far as any concerns people would have with chickens, I understand the issues people have with roosters. They are noisy. They don't just crow at dawn. They crow all day long. But quite frankly, I would rather hear soft, gentle clucking of chickens than hear my neighbor's dog that's tied out in the backyard with no fence around it all day long, all night long, howling and barking. I would much rather hear chickens clucking. If I'm wrong about the intent of this ordinance, my apologies, but I really have an issue with that, just simply because there are other ways to deal with those issues. There are health ordinances that you can look at. As far as noise ordinances, you can look at. You can look at nuisances, smell, which I guess would be a nuisance. And again, my other fear is that this is going to go towards somebody wanting to say, "No clothesline, no clotheslines in Whitehall." I live and die by my clothesline. I love it. It doesn't have a carbon footprint. I put my stuff out, I dry, I take it down. I don't leave it up for days or weeks at a time. And again, I just think this is a slippery slope that we're sliding down. And I'd like people to be able to use their property as they like to use it, as long as they provide for those animals appropriately. Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to take your main address at poll public? There's only one person left. All right. Well, thank you all for your comments. We'll move on now to our standing committee reports. And we begin with Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management did meet last week. Our minutes are on file. And we will be again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Sir, Community Engagement, Chairperson Thompson.
Thank you, President Graham. Community Engagement met last week. Our minutes are on file. When President Graham came to me, he said, "You do know that your, your committee doesn't really have a whole lot of legislation?" Thought about that and it didn't really bother me because I do have a lot that I plan on doing with my committee and some of the things that I'm working on. Right now, I'm involved with the rebranding of the schools. They're going through something that the city went through before. They're using creative spot. And they've asked me, since I'm on the Community Engagement Committee, to help out. And I've been answering a lot of questions that they've been asking about the schools and hope to see some good things come from that. Another thing I'm working on is with the Department of Health. They've chosen Whitehall as part of a health initiative. We're going to be meeting again coming up in the beginning of June. We're hoping to go ahead and probably put together some sort of event that we will be sponsoring with the Department of Health, possibly even some sort of assessments where people could go. And this will all be for free, maybe some blood pressure, some different testings. And then the other thing that I'm working on right now, and this is with the whole city, is our community picnic. That will be the Fourth of July. It will be right after the parade. So we're figuring probably from 12 to 6. We have asked every organization, every business, anybody that lives in the city of Whitehall to come be involved with this, to go ahead and to talk about their organization, their business, to sell what they want to sell, arts and crafts. If they've got some sort of a, something that their talent, that they're able to do, we've got some to come out and to perform for us as well. So I just wanted to let everybody know that this committee, even though it doesn't have a lot of legislation, it does have a lot of impact on the city.
Absolutely.
Yes. And we'll meet again next week.
All right. And I want to add something there. While there isn't a lot of legislation for this particular type or for this particular committee, there is no one who has more enthusiasm for this as chairman for a particular committee than Karen for this one. I felt that she was absolutely the best person for this. And I was so glad that she decided to take that role. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
You've got a wonderful talent. That brings us to Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. We sent your enforcement met last Tuesday. And it's on file. And we'll be again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
All right, sir. Economic Development, Chairperson McCourt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last week. As always, we have a lot of exciting things going on with our Director Jack Woodworth. Working on things tediously. Other than that, we are going to be getting probably more exciting things coming ahead for Whitehall, as he works so hard for our, our community. Let's do something after 6:30 in the back.
Infrastructure Making Services, Chairperson Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Making Services also met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We'll be again sometime in the back next week after 6:30.
All right. Thank you, sir. Public Safety, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met last week. And our minutes are on file. We'll be sometime after 6:30 next week.
All right. And that brings us to Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation also met last week in the back. Our minutes are on file. I wasn't there because my son is tracking. But just to let you know, we have some good things coming forward with our Parks and Recreation Commission, Department of the Administration. Plan on holding a meeting this week. It's scheduled for 29th on Thursday due to the conflict in the high school having district traffic. So we'll leave it at that. We've got some announcements to do.
There's all the standing committee reports. We'll move to our official street courts. And we'll begin with the mayor.
Hello. I would like to thank Chief Ziski for coming this evening and giving us an updated presentation on Coda and showing us the exciting things that are going on with the natural gas buses and also the goals for Coda in the, for this year. And I'm looking forward to some new routes as well. I think it's long overdue in Whitehall. We have a lot of bus riders here. So I really think that we could definitely use some additional routes here in Whitehall. I'd also like to say that our city council meetings, starting tonight? Well, probably tomorrow. But they are now being recorded visually. And you will be able to access the city council meetings the next day through our website. And there'll be a link through the website. And it's a very clear picture and has great sound. So you'll be, if you can't make a meeting, you can come or just turn on your computer and you can see what went on that night. So it's part of let's be open and transparent and let's, you know, have our meetings outside of our walls as well. Also, I would like to say that when the subject was brought up last week about code enforcement and what, what happens when people don't have the resources to fix up their homes? Well, I went straight to the source. I went to our code enforcement officer, Walt, surround. And I said, "So Walt, what happened?" And he says, "Well," he says, "I usually give them a timeline and they tell me if they..." Usually, usually they tell me if they don't have the money. And then he'll work out something. He also, he may stretch out the timeline a little farther for them if they think that they can get the money together to fix their home. If not, he will point them to resources from warranty and also through the private Whitehall that we can help them with the repairs that they may have. Now, we do have some people who are very independent and they don't want to be helped. He did give a story about a woman who is in her 90s and her house doesn't need painting. But she has refused every bit of help that he can give to her. She's refused people coming to paint her house. She's refused help from warranty, refused help from the private Whitehall. So you know what? And we hardly ever do this, but he says, "I'm not going to pursue it." She's 90 years old. She just wants to live in her house. And he says, "I'm not going to make her do something that, you know, she doesn't want to do." She's just trying to be independent. So city, as city leaders, I feel like we do have feelings. We try to help people. And we definitely, there's good resources out there. And we have definitely hooked up a lot of people with the resources that they need to fix their homes. And other than that, I just want to say I hope everybody has a good evening. And we'll talk again then. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Public Services, Mr. Ray.
Good evening. I only have one thing to report. The commencement of Pineview Drive Indoor Avenue Perpetrator Project is holding on next Tuesday, the 27th. So they will begin on the west side. I have noticed it's ready to go out and mail an arm by affected residents of how to negotiate the project. They're hoping to get the west side done on, on next week and then come back and do the east side on the other. But next week, the chief has allowed us to have, he promised to have the no parking sign on the west side bag during the time to work on the east side so that the resident will have at least some parking fairly close to their house while they're working on the east side. And so probably, all things considered, no more than three weeks and that'll all be done. And then the other project coming up is Westfall. Still haven't gotten funding in place, but it's with the same contractor. A little bit more aggressive a project, but certainly something that will really chance that area because it's driving Westfall and broader. There isn't much curb left. So I will be, we'll be thrilled when that's done. And we're more thrilled by the fact that we're only paying 30 cents on the dollar for that. Thank you.
Our city attorney, Mark Tanner.
Mr. President, members of council, I want to thank the mayor for giving us a heads up that the proceedings will be taped. Hopefully, it's possible, if you have a camera positioned, it does not show my bald spot. But I think that may be difficult. I do think that's a significant step towards transparency and utilizing the technology that we have so that those people who cannot be here, like our regular group of faithful attendees, can watch the replay. I think it's a great idea. I have no specific report this evening. I would just say to Captain Walsh that you probably don't remember me.
I met you a long time ago. Mom and I was best friends.
Right.
And when I had a retirement dinner, she was there.
I remember that as well. I would just point out that when I reviewed your case, I made sure that the assistant prosecutor, Matt Robb, advised you that once you conduct a hearing here and the magistrate made a decision, that you had a right to go downtown and start all over with that process as if there had been a finding of a conviction. And hopefully, you were informed of that. And that's all I have to add in that regard.
I went and talked to an attorney. It cost so much money to do that and time, and I had nothing to gain. When that man found me guilty, my insurance went up. That lady collected on my insurance, and I had nowhere to turn. Nobody would talk to me here in the city, nothing. Chief Ziski, I don't understand how that prosecutor and that magistrate could slap him in the face and not turn that, or do away with that ticket because the chief said this officer did not know what he was doing. I mean, I can't understand how he could just override the police duty.
Well, I just wanted to make it clear for the record that anybody who does attend mayor's court and is dissatisfied with the results of the hearing does have an automatic right to appeal it downtown. Thank you very much.
Our auditor, Mr. Dana.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. I would respectfully request favorable consideration on ordinances 34 and Resolution 24. Next week, committee meeting, I will be bringing the legislative tax budget. I have finished it and we have a mic to go free reading. So and then have it ready to go downtown on Friday, July 1st.
Director, Brandon Howard.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council, administration. I have no official report to say this, sir. Thank you.
We have received following municipal reports, which are on file in council offices that are in emergency reports for council for April 2014. Fire department report of overtime work pending April 2014. The auditor's year-to-date cash position as of April 30, 2014. The auditor's month-to-date, year-to-date bank report as of April 30, 2014. The auditor's month-to-day, year-to-day expense report as of April 30, 2014. And the auditor's month-to-day, year-to-day revenue report as of April 30, 2014. Under communications, petitions, and claims, we have the two items that are listed on the agenda this evening, and we have received no additional items at this time. That brings us to our verification of copies. Ms. Turfman, please follow the roll on whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation.
Greg.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Theodor.
Yes.
Report.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to our pieces, various pieces of legislation for the evening. Under third reading, we have Resolution 13, 2014. It's authorizing the mayor to enter into a annual incentive grant agreement with outlet dental centers to open a full-service dental practice at 4121 East Main Street, Whitehall, alive.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 13, 2014, and move for its adoption. Circle.
The motion by Ms. McCourt and the second by Ms. Connison for adoption of, introduction and adoption of Resolution 13, 2014. Questions or comments? Ms. Turfman, please call the roll.
Greg.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Theodor.
Yes.
Report.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Resolution 13, 2014 has been adopted. Those are all the items we have under third reading. Under second reading, we begin with 23, 2014. It's approving and making an appropriation transfer in the amount of $60,000 from the workers' compensation account to the legal defense account and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by Title Home Land. Next, we have 27, 2014. It's approving and making an appropriation in the amount of $100,000 from the community development fund to the Hall of Reinvestment Program account and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by Title Home Land. Next, we have Resolution 15, 2014. It's recognizing Dennis Allen as the 2014 Police Employee of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $250 as additional compensation. That resolution is being read by Title Home Land. Resolution 16, 2014 is recognizing Keith Hanson as the 2014 Fire Employee of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $250 as additional compensation. That resolution is being read by Title Home Land. Resolution 17, 2014 reads, recognizing Tammy Sexton as the 2014 Support Administrative Employee of the Year and awarding her a one-time payment of $250 as additional compensation. That resolution is being read by Title Home Land. Next is Resolution 18, 2014. It's recognizing Jared Utzinger as the 2014 Labor Management- It's recognizing Jared Utzinger as the two thousand fourteen Labor Management Employee of the Year and awarding him, and awarding him a one-time payment of two hundred and fifty dollars as additional compensation. That resolution is being read by Tyto Homeway. Resolution twenty, twenty fourteen is authorizing the mayor to create and implement the White Hall Home Reinvestment Program with assistance from the Honeycomb National Bank, which provides reimbursement for two homeowners for exterior home remodeling projects. That resolution is being read by Tyto Homeway, and it's also the last item we have under second reading. Under first reading, we have ordinance thirty, twenty fourteen. It's amending section five zero five point one eight, titled Prohibiting Animals Specified and Dangerous Animals Defined of the General Offenses Code of the City of White Hall. That ordinance is being read by Tyto Homeway. Next is ordinance thirty-one, twenty fourteen. It's authorizing the issuance of bonds in the amount of not to exceed one million five hundred fifty-five, pardon me, one million five hundred fifty thousand dollars for the general purpose of designated constructing and improving current streetscape improvements for Main Street with related site improvements and app, appet, appetit, appetit, why y'all have, why y'all have to put that word in there? What's it doing? It's appetit. Appetit. There to, and approving related matters, you know, I couldn't say that before, and approving related matters in conjunction with the issuance of said bonds. That ordinance is being read by Tyto Homeway. I've got to plug it in two more times. Maybe I'll get it playing. Next, we have ordinance thirty-two, twenty fourteen. It's authorizing the issuance of bonds in the amount of not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of acquisition, acquisition of real estate located on Hamilton Road with related demolition and site improvements in connection therewith, and approving related matters in connection with the issuances, with the issuance of said bonds. That ordinance is being read by Tyto Homeway. Next, we have ordinance thirty-three, twenty fourteen. It's advancing fourteen thousand nine hundred fifty dollars from the law enforcement trust fund to the two thousand thirteen vote-approved best grant program fund, appropriated fourteen thousand nine hundred fifty dollars from the two thousand thirteen vote-approved best grant program fund to the two thousand thirteen vote-approved best grant program account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance thirty-three, two thousand fourteen, and move for suspension of the rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Morrison and a second by Ms. Lecourt for the introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance thirty-three, twenty fourteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Greg.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance thirty-three, twenty fourteen. Move for that.
Second.
Question by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Lecourt for adoption of ordinance thirty-three, twenty fourteen. Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Greg.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-three, twenty fourteen has been adopted. Next, we have ordinance thirty-four, twenty fourteen. It's making and approving a supplemental appropriation of five hundred seventy-four dollars, eighteen cents from unappropriated monies in the mandatory drug fine fund to the mandatory drug fine fund account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance thirty-four, twenty fourteen, and move for suspension of the rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for the introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance thirty-four, twenty fourteen. Questions or comments? I bet you can't say that drug, fine, drug, fine, out of there ten times in a row. Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Greg.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance thirty-four, twenty fourteen. Move for that. Second. Question by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of ordinance thirty-four, twenty fourteen. Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Greg.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-four, twenty fourteen has been adopted. Next, we have Resolution twenty-two, twenty fourteen. A resolution reauthorizing an agreement between the City of White Hall and the Board of County Commissioners, Franklin County, Ohio, on behalf of the City of White Hall in order to participate in the Franklin County, Ohio Department of Housing and Urban Development entitlement program and abide by the covenants of that program as stated in the hearing. That resolution is being read by Tyto Homeway. Next, we have Resolution twenty-three, twenty fourteen. Authorizing the mayor to enter into contracts with the Director of Transportation for the State of Ohio for upgraded traffic control equipment and hardware throughout the City of White Hall, and that resolution is being read by Tyto Homeway. Moving on, we have Resolution twenty-four, twenty fourteen. The resolution strongly opposing the passage of amended substitute House Bill five by the Iowa General, General Assembly, which proposes uniformity measures for municipal income tax in the form of unfunded mandates and a substantial loss of revenue and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I introduce Resolution twenty-four, two thousand and fourteen, and the suspension of the rules. I'm so sorry. Second. Do I need to re-say that?
No, 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 you're fine. I have a motion by Ms. Lecourt and a second by Ms. Connison for the introduction and suspension, and suspension of rules on Resolution twenty-four, twenty fourteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
I didn't hear the second.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Didn't I say it?
No, you said it, but I didn't hear it.
Oh.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, Greg.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution twenty-four, twenty fourteen. Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Greg.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four, twenty fourteen has been adopted. Our last resolution for the evening is twenty-five, twenty fourteen. Authorizing the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement with the County of Franklin entitled Fiscal Year Two Thousand Fourteen Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program Award and declaring an emergency. That resolution is being read by Tyto Homeway. Those are all the items we have for legislation this evening. We'll move on to our second opportunity for poll public.
Who states her name and address for the record?
Gerald Dixon, thirty-eight seventy-seven Dona Street, and unprepared. And by the way, I wanted to add a piece of trivia. The person that I've known longest in this room is Paul Werther. Angels Peewee League, nineteen sixty-nine. Anyway, a couple of things. It has Mayor Maggard states that there's a kinder, gentler, more considerate code enforcement in this city. I appreciate that, and that's all I've ever wanted, besides constitutional issues. But I also want you to know, and let this council know as well as the mayor, that I actually approve of the home reinvestment program. But with such a high level in which people can apply for it, that's my issue with it. Because it seems like it's the poor people that need the help, not someone with a hundred thousand. That's a lot of money. I don't make that much, and I keep good care of my home. The final bit of business relates to the amendment to the, or the ordinance to amend the code, which refers to bees and fowl. And I spoke with Councilman Morris a little bit about that, and Ms. Blake had some excellent points to make, and at a later time, I will present a more thorough gathering of my feelings towards that, but I am opposed to it in its current form. I think it can be amended in a certain way, as Ms. Blake alluded to, with, you know, things that, you know, perhaps square footage and so forth, but with the trouble with the bees that this country is having, and, and the actual quietness and, and banality of foul that there are, it doesn't seem to me that it is, that it has the best merits at this time, if at all. And I wanted to explain that. I have a friend with chickens in Virginia, and I actually, as I told Mr. Morrison, I ran into some people in a brownstone in Brooklyn two years ago, had chickens in their backyard. So, square footage is not necessarily an issue, but my friends in Virginia, the chickens love the ticks, and they love the stink bugs. And if there's anyone, any homeowners in this town that can attest, which includes myself, last year was a mess with the stink bugs, and it still is, they're everywhere. And if I can have chickens, and my yard eaten those stink bugs, I'm happy. So, just to state that, and I'll bring some stuff later, and so, hopefully, the debate begins. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to the board council at the last opportunity for poll public? All right, we'll move on to the community day board.
Hello, good evening, council. I just have a couple of things that I want to share with you, and then I'm going to defer to Karen, because she has so much going on with the Fourth of July festivities. I wanted to let you know that June fifteenth at seven P M. is the kickoff to the Music in the Park series that we have had. Hypnotics will be playing as the first band. And then, the mayor has scheduled her next to reach out event for June nineteenth from five to six, and we're going to do it across the street, weather, hopefully, weather's nice, on the gazebo area. So, again, that's five to six, and we hope to see as many people there as possible, and we'll be getting the word out about that more.
Thank you. July fourth, I feel like it's already begun, because I'm looking on it steadily. We're going to be kicking it off on Saturday, June twenty-eighth with, we're going to have two pageants on that day. We have a baby pageant, Little Miss. One will start at ten, and the next one will start, one will be from ten to twelve, and then we'll go right on into the next one. We will be having June twenty-ninth, a car show. Please enter your, actually, you know what, I'm calling it a cruise-in, because we really would love to see motorcycles, boats, you name it, if you can go, is there some wheels you can drive in there? We'd love you to enter. So, this year should be a little bit more entertaining than, than most. We also have Music in the Park that night. So, it will be, that will be going on as well at a cruise-in. So, we'll have music, we'll have boats, we'll have cars, it will be entertaining. I don't want to give you too much information, because my gosh, I could go on with every pageant and every, every festival that we do have, but I want to let you know that the parade will be held on the Fourth, ten o'clock, same route that we had last year. We're going to start over Brown and Yearling, and we're going to walk on up to Edna, down Brown and Yearling, down to Edna, and then up right through to the park, right up Edna. And immediately afterwards, we will start our community picnic. So, I just wanted to give you that information. Next week, or actually, the following week, I will have parade applications here. I will also have applications for the cruise-in, for the pageants, as well as the agenda for the Fourth of July, and we're accepting nominations right now for Citizen of the Year. And if anybody would like to bring us in to city hall here, they can put it in my mailbox.
So, anything that's unique on wheels.
Anything unique on wheels, bring it on in.
Does anyone else have anything for community day board? All right, we'll move on to poll council. We'll begin with Mr. Greg.
Just want to thank everyone for coming, and have a good week and a good Memorial Day weekend. Thanks.
That brings us again to Ms. Connison.
Thank you very much. I want to thank everybody for coming. I want to thank everybody for participating, and the poll, I think that it's fantastic that you opened that up, that anybody can come talk about the cards, and obviously, that's working, because more people are able to come up and speak, and that's exactly what we wanted. So, thank you very much for participating.
Karen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you, everybody, for coming. Chief, very good, thank you so much. I enjoyed that. And you were running your fifteen minutes of the gig, and the mayor took it down to eleven, beat that by three. Well, you're ready. Barbara Blake, thank you so much.
I've also been enjoying my homework. I'm different, so, you know, we talk to other communities, and I'm not talking Oxford, Ohio, Northampton, Cleveland, I, I mean, generally, like areas around Franklin County, you'd be amazed what you find and what they have. Like, Mr. President, I'll have.
Ms. Lecourt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too just want to say thank you for talking to everybody, and the input that you all put in here this evening, and helping grow our community. Also, I wish everybody a happy, safe Memorial Day weekend from now, and there's always a special birthday in the house on Memorial Day. One, our city attorney, Mike Shannon, cheers, my dad's birthday, so it's hard to forget, Mike Shannon's birthday.
Same age, too. Yeah. It looks good.
Yeah, they had a close connection, so it was a special place for my and my dad. But other than that, I just want myself a holiday weekend. What do you want to say? Thank you.
Morrison. Thank you, Mr. President. I also thank everyone for coming, and I do appreciate everyone's input on legislation. That's what makes me enjoy the, the security input of the city. So, I.
Harvey.
Thanks, President. I have Mr. Lawrence. I do, though. Mr. Lawrence.
I have to say that this is disconcerting, when I heard the mayor, what he said about the events will not be taped at this point forward. I do appreciate the heads-up, all but intended, and I am announcing my first annual fundraiser, and the checks will be made out to the airport for men. Other than that, I hope everyone has a great, more of a weekend, and I hope that will come.
And what about that pending legislation that you were working on, that anyone on council or any administration had to be slightly at risk of, of completely involved?
Well, actually, this is going to be for all of us up here, so the two things are also beginning to touch with you as well. All right. All right. Never mind.
Thank you, sir. We have no more official business coming before us this evening, so I would therefore ask that everyone please come back again at our next council meeting, and a motion for adjournment is served in order.
You said to adjourn. I'll say.
A motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Rodriguez. Ms. Churchman, please call the roll.
Greg.
Yes.
Connison.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
LaCourt.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
All right, and thank you all.
Hey, one more thing, I'm going to tell you. All right, I'm.